All right, I'd like to call to order the Sherwin School Committee meeting for September 15th at 6:33 PM. Actually, first, I'd like to say hi to Mr. Aldis. This is your first time on the meeting. We're very happy to have you with us.
Happy to be here.
So let's, um...
Can I bring up something? I'd like to add something to the agenda. We've had less than four or eight hours of no sign. Bringing up something in this select meeting tonight. Two items concerning the current road, former cart road now real road, that connects the back of the school to the cemetery. There are two items on that I'd like to discuss where you think it's appropriate on the agenda.
Okay, um, can we do that just after we get the introduction of CSA? So we can go back to the group before we do that?
You introduced Mr. Aldis, who was president, but you also introduced Mr. Hamar.
I didn't, I apologize. I mean, you know, actually, it's not important. Well, I'm sorry. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Hans Bummar, our new business manager. So, welcome to your first Sherwin meeting. You've been around for a while now, so... Okay, so actually, we'd like to introduce first the CSA co-presidents. And actually, since you were the former one, would you make a brief introduction? That would be great.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to welcome Angie Johnson to the audience this evening. She's taking over as the president for Pine Hill CSA. Dave and I finished up her year term last June, as most are aware. Angie has decided to step up and take the helm. And of course, she's ready to go and also eager to find a co-president. So let's see if we can draw up some interesting parties if we ever get the chance to talk up to the CSA. Thanks, Angie, for your volunteering to the position. And on behalf of the school committee, we wish you the best of luck and another year of success.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to start. Dr. Brown, Scott, everyone's been very supportive and helpful, so we're off to a great start.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you, because it's a big undertaking, but certainly rewarding. Actually, thinking longer introductions, who are mine? Is the new, is it the teacher rep or what?
Yeah, for Jay.
So she'll be joining us in our meetings?
Yeah, I will.
Any other Q and A comments? All right.
So besides the joint, is there any one who would be the first person to be here?
All right, so then we'll go to the reports, and we'll come back to the current members. So let's see if we can get to this topic. So go to Brown.
We, when we're doing Q and A, we'll be helping the CSA to consider reporting. They have something to say. If there are any comments, do you have anything to talk about?
Well, I mean, all we have, we've had our teacher appreciation luncheon to start the year, and we did our stipend, some things that we give at the beginning of the year. And our upcoming event would be our Pine Hill 5K, which will be this year October 18th. So it's a spooky fun run because it's supposed to Halloween. But that's our next big up and coming. And, you know, we're just hoping to support teachers, so that's all we have planned right now. Everyone come out and run. We want to run fast. Get out there, contribute, be around school. Anything else to say?
No.
I was going to say, thank you for hosting the Back to School Ice Cream Social for all of our families. That's always a coveted tradition at our school, beginning and end of the year.
Thank you. It was fun. I was very nervous about friends, and no one's coming. And then, all of a sudden, everyone showed up and stood on cue and saying, so it was lovely.
Sherwin time. Yeah, people show up three minutes before an event, and then they pack up.
They did, it was great. So thank you all very much.
Principals report?
Thank you. I will highlight just a few things from the lengthy written report I submitted to all. Kudos to a poised and prepared faculty, staff, and especially the school custodians for a very smooth, albeit a little bit warmer than usual, but a very smooth opening to the school year. We were excited to welcome more new students than usual through the school registration process. So our members not only held their homes, but exceeded our projections, so that was good news. I wanted to acknowledge Lori Ryan and a slew of other teachers who were brave and embarked on camp adventure for the first time this summer. I personally was hoping to target 40 participants, and we had 99 or 100, I think, depending on the day, students engaged in engineering and critical and creative thinking activities that are ongoing on camp right here in this wing. And we will definitely be committing to that next year, back by popular demand. It was a neat learning experience, and back to that multi-age, little kids, big kids. It was, it was, it was a very dynamic week. I wanted to acknowledge that we have 13 new employees here at Pine Hill, and I listed them for you to see. All of them have hit the ground running with positive energy, great contributions to our school culture. And it goes without saying that our Pine Hill colleagues have embraced all of our new employees and are supporting their induction and transition to our school. Specifically, I wanted to acknowledge Amy Curry, our new team chair, who has been hired in a pointy position. And the good fortune we have to have Amy overlap for the month of September with the outgoing Marlon Cala Russo, soon to be retiring, special education administrator. So that's been a very seamless transition, and Amy has hit the ground running. Not mentioned in your report, because this information is cut off the press. Cindy Sidman, our second grade teacher, who's been out on a medical leave, will be returning on September 21st. Her families have been communicated with several times throughout this process as we've defined substitute plans and transition plans. So Cindy's eager to get back, and we're excited to help her. Many improvements to our school facility this summer. And we had our first building capital committee meeting earlier this month, on September 10th. That committee will be meeting to follow up to determine what capital improvement projects might be recommended for next year. And I think I hit on all of the big highlights, unless there are any follow-up questions?
I, this is less of a question, more of an idea. I would love if we were appropriate and embed links to things. For instance, I was reading through a report, and I didn't know what makerspace was, and so I looked that up. It was fascinating. So it'd be great, like a link to that, so people could learn what they wanted to. I didn't know what WITA was, the social media program. Look up all those. So sticking in a link, if possible, if this is going to be posted on the website, or you do, especially between you and someone in the other side of this. I think that would be a great way for people to learn the one. Because it's fascinating stuff, especially the makerspace. I thought that was so cool. And really, the thing is that I would love to hear more about some of the new hires, especially the rest of the children. You did mention Amy Curry. Just because of their, their team, like he rolls, we know, so it's just waiting for so long. That'd be really nice, if we could learn some more about them, perhaps.
That would be great, as long as I kept direction about what use personnel versus, you know, confidential versus public consumption. So would that clarify any help that you provide more information?
Dr. Brown, last week for the heat wave we had, did you experience any concerns during the, especially the last Wednesday or Thursday, when we had the really high camps? We've seen a lot of visits to the nurses' office, or did you have to shift any classrooms around?
Interestingly, on the hottest day, the reports to the nurses' office were lower than average, perhaps due to lethargy, I'm not sure. We had posted, and certainly teachers using, you know, creative understanding of the resources in the building. Some teachers took the opportunity to conduct a lesson in the teachers' room or another air-conditioned area. The technology lab is always very coveted during hot days. It goes without saying that last week was a record-breaker, and our classrooms at our school hit temperatures higher than we've seen in...
Did it tend to be the, like, the back of the building, all the classrooms on this backside?
This D wing in particular, I think in part because of circulation, and it could be in part because we have the beautiful windows in the classrooms. The C wing, the third grade wing, tends to have the best advantage on hot days. It's lower to the ground, and it's cooler. The kindergarten classrooms get very warm with their tin roof. So obviously, extra efforts for hydration. I didn't keep the children indoors for recess, I considered it, but I thought the crossbones outside would actually be an advantage to the stagnant air inside. So we fared uncomfortably, but we fared. And I did try to use reverse psychology with our fifth graders to say, "Well, next year at middle school, they'll have climate control." Visualize. I just feel it's very important.
I have a couple of questions. I was reading through your report as well, and there's a couple of things that pique my curiosity and interest as well. You mentioned an expansion to the health and a few other areas for K-2. I was interested to learn more about that. I was also very excited to read about the inclusion of 3D printing. That sounded very exciting. And then there was a comment, and I thought maybe others might be interested as well, in the Pine Hill Success Team.
Well, let me speak to that then. What you're mentioning was rolled into congratulating our staff with their excellent and ambitious summer curriculum work proposals that they put forward, many of which I was able to approve. So thanks to generous funding and ambition of our faculty. Thank you. A total of 105 days of summer curriculum work were completed. And a lot of that went into refining, revamping, or in some cases, instituting lesson plans for expanded curricular areas. So Karen Leduke has been leading the work of K through 12 with our technology educators to make sure that computer science and computer programming are revolved. A particular focus of Lori Ryan and Teresa Meneme, our librarian and technology teacher, was to shore up those learning experiences across K-5, but particularly at kindergarten. There's no coding or computer programming standards, if you will, for those grade levels, but we certainly know there's an interest in a developmentally appropriate mechanism for exciting and engaging students. So Lori and Teresa spurred by their innovation and funded by the generous grant received from DSEF, are bringing B-BOSS and basic coding opportunities to our students in kindergarten. Part of this was accepted, our grade levels, grade levels 1 through 5 have historically had six session subjects for being kindergarten. We had five, I think back from the days when we were a pointy program. And I thought that was a little bit in that potential for the teacher preparatory time allocation. And also thinking about opportunities where kindergarten students, now that they're well in the saddle of a coding program, could benefit from a special. So we thought of music in our, recreational PE and HOP opportunities, and we decided that a makerspace, a launch, if you will, to computer programming and engineering is really wanting to harness our energy. So if you come on a Thursday afternoon last period, all kindergarten students would be locally here in this library with our librarian and our tech teacher, and of course, a lot of teacher helpers out going through stations and learning activities to launch for excitement in our basic curriculum, higher technology learning. We asked a couple of questions. The expansion to health, as you recalled two years ago, we instituted a curriculum through our K-TEA teacher. At that time, we looked at the strands, the curriculum standards for their health strands. And Mr. Pines developed a repertoire of lessons and learning experiences for students under the health standards. This summer allocated some curriculum work during, for them to look more deeply. We were clear on what we wanted students to know and be able to do. What we really needed to add more elbow grease was considering resources to teach those health concepts with more manipulatives, materials, thematic text, and in some cases, video clips. So I'm happy that he could mention, really, to make the lessons more robust.
Should the music slash art department be in place? Is there any, so I'm curious about what changes or difference will be, and is it...
Oh, the Jim Barry, the director of Fine Performing Arts, has been out a couple of times to meet with me and check everything. And I know that she's already been in our art and music classrooms a couple of times this year. A specific example was that time was harnessed over the summer for the music teachers at Chikiru and Pine Hill. They worked on oral programs and to work on consistencies around the oral standards and music experiences for children in the oral area. There's coordination around art showcases coming up. I took part in...
There's coordination between our educators over Pine Hill and Chikiru to document and label and print according to the understanding by the parents. And so Janice has already reached out to them and just monitored by this attempt. And I'm really pleased with her. But she's actually made quite a bit.
The street sweepings. Okay, and in investigating that, I found out that they're not supposed to use street sweepings in 500 feet of any well. Okay, and our well is behind the school. So, I don't think they were aware of that, so I sent some communication to the town administrator, and I was gonna maybe write a letter here tonight, but he called me earlier and said that they've looked that over, they're gonna remove those sweepings. There were several truckloads of sweepings that were dumped at the top of that cartload heading up to the cemetery. And our well is behind the school, as you know, we have that little playground there. It's like 500 feet. Because sometimes those are considered sort of hazardous ways, they're not supposed to be used on residential streets, or near wells, or wetlands, or rivers, or anything like that. So, I think that the cars aren't taken care of, they're gonna remove them. And the other part is, it might not be something we're doing tonight, but we might want to think about is, there was discussion with the gate on top of that. There used to be a car path. And when there was a car path, they for a while put rocks up there, because cars couldn't come down, because kids wouldn't go down that road anyway. Well, now, the road, I mean, anybody could drive down that road. And so, there's a gate up there. Now, it wasn't locked, I guess it was clipped off something, there was some screws or something to hold it together. And some people don't wanna have any gate at all, some people wanna have a gate. We actually have a gate between our parking lot and that drive road behind the school. When someone were to come down that road, they might not be able to get down, it's easier to get down, they'd be trapped here, they'd be behind the school. And that's where the kids walk down that driveway, they park that driveway to get to the playing field. So, you know, from my perspective, I don't really want anyone except police officers, or, you know, the ground people, or a fire coming down. I don't want the air to be person to be coming down that road. For one thing that's down tonight, I was having, uh, things down during the day and actually drive back towards Stephen's playground. If they got trapped, we have hours change, they probably drive across grass or across the playground to get to our parking lot, please. So, uh, there's been some discussion about whether or not there should be a gate there. I know there's a lock gate on the much bigger, nicer road. Uh, it goes out the back, there's a lock on either side. And so, it keeps off the traffic, and that way they'd have to stop or the fire, and unlock it.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's a full-size road back there. So, if there's anyone who's left over, my understanding is that, not the one that can sneak down behind the school. Now, I know we have an officer sergeant here to maybe give some input, I'm just trying to do. Uh, how you doing? I'm sorry to know, the chief just wanted me to come down and tell, uh, tell all of the, he's in a select meeting right now. We do object to the road being closed, but he would just like an opportunity to come and speak, uh, speak about it. He didn't have any particular say to me, uh, he just wanted me to come down and tell that, uh, he just wants to come down and talk. And right now, is he stuck in a select meeting, but he does wanna come down and speak about it. And we do object to the road being closed. Okay? Closed, or closed altogether, or would it be okay if the police, the fire, and ground people?
I don't wanna speak for him, so I'm not sure what.
Okay.
Get myself in trouble.
Yeah. I know the police wanna come up quickly and perhaps catch somebody that way, but I think it's, those times, hopefully it'll be few, but I think it's more apt to have someone getting up there and either by mistake, or some kids on purpose driving down behind the school. And I don't find, if everyone who needs one has a key, but I would like it secure. So, I don't know what feeling is here, and I don't know if we have to take a road down. We probably should wait until we listen to the chief.
The lieutenant just told me he was gonna call, so he might, he might be out. So, I'll wait a few minutes and see if he's gonna come down, I'll let you know.
He may, he's gonna make an attempt to appear to the city.
I believe so. He can get out of that meeting soon enough, and I, I know he wanted to come down, he just wanted to send me down now to say this.
Okay. Okay, basically, one's been settled, it sounds like, and the other is sort of, either to make up their own mind, and we can have our input later once we've heard all the facts.
Right, so I think that's good, let's just bring on the one, we'll see.
Yeah, I have two questions.
Right, right. That's good, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, bro, thank you.
Um, okay, so Dr. DeDoo.
Thank you very much. The opening of schools, uh, within second, children were learning, which is a wonderful example of how hard Villa prepares the educators for, um, so we each started, uh, we did studies, everybody, which is wonderful. I want you to follow us on Twitter, @DSF schools, and so we're speaking about, we also be, last Friday, kind of, see a variety of things that happen across all four schools, uh, to see, we, the agenda. If you have ideas, it's, it's, uh, there are others who are on Twitter, too, um, DS finance, uh, we've got athletic director, uh, major sports, uh, we have kids, and we have, so I'll keep your titles. Barbara mentioned a little bit of professional development. I wanted to highlight the science of professional development that happens in the field of science. In order to compare, educators take five in order to implement the math standards, have not to vote yet, but we have great intel that they will be voted, um, based on the next generation science standard, truly focused on the new theory and project baseline, which is to be, um, belong in science and run themselves to science. Some of the educators who are going to graduate, and we welcomed all of those educators that Barbara mentioned, you know, mentoring the revenue program, where by college, we can do this, um, the educators, kind of, chair, we staff, um, we spent a day looking about what it means to develop, or mentoring relationships, um, we shared a wonderful breakfast, we learned the DS realities, or, uh, probably we can navigate throughout the whole town, both in geographic locations, and that it's easy to understand what it's like for a huge department to be doing, and to be covered in, uh, and also, um, we had some places out, had a educator from the high school who did her third year, but she never been to come. It's a piece of what it is. So, it's not only the new educator, the new mentor, see that, but she, she said, I've been here before, for a second year, because of reality, or, uh, I'm glad it's a good place. But it's also the positivity.
Say, that picture, like, the picture with us, you mentioned. Everybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Raymond. Good evening, all. It's, it's a pleasure for me to be here, and I'm happy to be serving as your individual speaker. I just wanted to comment quickly on the format for the agenda. Note that it's a little different than previous years. And our goal in reformatting, reformatting the agenda is to be as efficient as we can in providing the information, but also being clear, very clear about what is, will be on the agenda. Under the reports piece, you'll notice that there's another report later on in the agenda from the special education director. But moving forward, under the reports agenda, the reports will actually be, the idea is that whoever's providing the report will be here in person. And the goal is not to speak to each individual item in a report, but to provide a comprehensive report in writing, but then to highlight certain pieces of that report to you, and then you'll have an opportunity, as you did with Barbara, that would be very helpful, to ask questions about, about the reports. The other thing that, that I'm learning through this process is, uh, that you certainly receive, uh, similar information through Barbara's report, through Karen's report, and through my report. So, uh, so we'll hope to fine tune that as we go through. So, just a couple of comments relating to the opening, personnel, and enrollment. I'll echo the comments that both Barbara and Karen made about the successful opening, and clearly, at Pine Hill, the opening was very, very successful, and Barbara had an opportunity to, to speak in more detail about that. But what I wanted to say is that, and you all know this, but perhaps not everyone does, is that when you have a successful opening like that, it doesn't happen by chance. And frankly, a successful opening is due in large part to, sort of, careful planning, and definitely all summer long, under Barbara's direction, working Barbara's work, Frank's work, a lot of work and assistance from the administrative, help from the administrative assistance staff, that were identified. And, uh, and of course, the facility, which I will tell you, I think, on the day, looks spectacular. I really wanna emphasize Barbara's comments, and kudos and compliments to Mr. Goodwood and his staff. They've worked tirelessly all summer on, not just only a variety of projects, special projects, but all of the typical annual summer cleaning and maintenance work that gets done. So, kudos to them, kudos to the administrative staff, and compliments to the entire Pine Hill staff for a very successful opening. Congratulations, and thank you, Barbara. In terms of the personnel, appreciate the feedback, Ian, and we'll endeavor to provide some additional information, background information, which, which may round out, you know, some of that information for you. So, that's a good, that's a very good suggestion, and I'm not gonna reiterate what Barbara's already said, but we've got great staff, except I will relate to you a story that Barbara shared with me when we were meeting. And Barbara, this is your report here now, and this share, if I'm not mistaken, was the first opportunity in four years for you to actually hire a new classroom teacher.
That's correct.
So, so I have to tell you that, that's never been my experience in any elementary school that I've worked with. So, so that speaks volumes to me, to the dedication and commitment of the staff. I know there's been a little downsizing, but, but it really is, uh, a wonderful statement about the dedication of our staff here at Pine Hill. So, I know there was just, there was a lot of excitement about being able to have that opportunity. And we welcome all of our new staff, of course. And then, just a couple of comments about the enrollment. Good news, I believe, that starting school with more students than what were projected, even in the ability for enrollment to update it, first. Kindergarten projections remain steady, but there was, you know, there was a total of twenty-six, uh, more students than were projected in grade one to five. And, uh, and when all is said and done, right now, we stand at sixteen more students than were projected. Three hundred and fifty-five of those students were, uh, students assumed, or we carried over students from the grades, grade, grade levels last year to this year, and we anticipate ten additional students from the in-migration, or migration process they produce every year. So, in October, there'll be a more comprehensive report on enrollment, so we'll, you know, trends that we may be seeing, especially over the last three years, and that will start the process for, the whole process of, uh, putting together projections for next year, and years after that, and will set us up hopefully for, uh, being able to use that, utilize that, that knowledge as we go through the budget.
I've got a question about enrollment. There's sixty kids, do they spread across, or are they concentrated in there?
We, uh, registered, uh, all told, we registered thirty-one students.
Yep.
There were five per grade lost, with the exception of second and third grade, but there were seven and nine.
Normally, we see a tick up between the pre-K and fourth grade, right? You see a natural increase in that.
We used to see more of an influx in first grade, because we had building in the garden. Uh, and, uh, in past years, we registered, uh, if they had two children for every one that, that enrolled, families that we located. This year, we registered three children for every, we only lost seven children. So, it was, it was proportionate, we had, uh, five children across all grade levels. We picked up five new kindergarten children this summer, but you wouldn't know that because they're all new at that grade level. Uh, and five children per grade level.
Was that by sixteen women, sixteen kids?
Thirty, we, we registered thirty-one new children all told, and we lost seven.
How much family?
I don't recall off the top of my head, um, uh, I have that information in my office.
So, the enrollment, you just to get a report like this, and a lot of information will be similar?
So, I put that back, enrollment information, uh, I, I will be honest with you, it's not at all how I vote for enrollment numbers in the past. It's, it's different. I'm not saying that it won't get the same format, I, I'm, you know, my goal isn't to, to disrupt and change the past practice and the future, but, but I've started to make some comparisons based on the methodology that I agree with you.
I'm happy to see that.
Yeah.
I think I'll just curious if you figured that out, yeah. This is helpful, that it has some of that information, and I guess I have questions about, I always have questions on special ed. If that changes so often, especially over the summer, it would have positive financial experience in that area, that at some point, you say, it's gonna be, it's gonna be negative, so it'd be nice to have that information across as well as other. And so, in the next, I, it would be nice to see what changes in the split, between where we end of the year, where we are.
Sure. So, my understanding is that last year, uh, there was a, a movement to, uh, to make sure that enrollment, enrollment conversations, enrollment numbers, and enrollment projections, as well as updates, uh, whether it's Sherbo and Dover of the region, were tied to the state reports submission that are required for October, March, and June. That, that was my understanding. So, in October, as I indicated, I anticipate that there'll be a much more comprehensive report, that won't just be, uh, regular education classroom. So, we're gonna be on that, we'll certainly report out that, and that's what we can try to find out. Yes, so what we'll do is we'll hire to October first, enrollment, which is, you know, is the basis for, um, the state, uh, I checked seventy-one million, and other, you know, use that as other benchmark data. And, and our submissions to the Department of Primary Secondary Education, that has to do with student demographics, enrollment, and other data, is all based on what the student, what, 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 kind of, of, of.
Can I just clarify, super number three sixty-five, is that with the sixteen students, or is that the increase of sixteen, or you add sixteen to the six?
Add sixteen.
Add sixteen to that?
So, yeah, so my comments are really based on, uh, the information that was last presented to the school community in June, which was an enrollment update. So, the K five projection as of June one was three hundred and fifty-five students, plus, uh, the projection that there'll be additional ten students beyond that, into in-migration and out-migration. And if you, that, that three fifty-five actually comes from, uh, a kindergarten number was established, that was established, and then the number, so the number of second graders that were in the projection equal the number of first graders from the last year. You go right down the line. So, that's a little different than how I view projections. But, but that's fine. And, uh, so that's with three fifty-five, so the three sixty-five is a combination of rolling all grade one to four students forward into the next grade, determining through the census, kindergarten number, and then adding ten students through the in-migration and out-migration process. Does that come with coverage?
Yes, yeah, and I believe that's what we did start.
But that's what.
It's three hundred and sixty-five.
That's really my concern, although I know that we'll get a much more in-depth report, and we can talk about class sizes, and I'll get diving into all of that next month.
Yes.
I was thinking more from a budgetary perspective, that's the, it's the, the budgeted three sixty-five, that's the.
Okay, yeah.
And we thought we were matriculating a much larger cohort of students to middle school than we were receiving in kindergarten, so that was part of the drop.
Okay. That was exactly the message I was trying to get, three sixty-five versus three eighty-one. You did a good job on that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You good?
I'm good.
Has anybody else have any more today questions? All right.
Oh, to, one thing on your, on the format, people commenting, I appreciate the fact you put the, uh, agenda items on the back.
All right, so I do believe that the floor is yours this month, with the budget.
Let me close up.
Um, in your faculty, you have two exhibit to today, which is status appropriations, and act of disclaims, and looks, uh, for, for, for capital, because it is capital projects up, update. Um, exhibit is status appropriations, it says the format that you had used before, it doesn't much changes, so you have to notice it right, whether it's, or the discrepancy variance from the budget amount. Um, you could highlight, like, the difficult results from an operational perspective, element of surplus, which is one, which mainly is fair, very favorable variance, and legal service to school community account, typically driven by the contract negotiation, staff petition, after the budget was finalized last year. It's called lower than expected special education expenses, bill of electricity and heating rates also were significant, particularly to the surplus. Um, below the line at the regional level, again, lower than expected, for low in budget, excuse me, special education out of district to its expense, the main driver, which is contributing to districts for other schools. Uh, state certificate reimbursement, for, 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 twenty-seven point five percent, a claim over the threshold of forty-one, four oh eight, total without disturbance, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred million dollars, the record rate change for two years. Um, what is that compared to last year? Higher. But it will be lower. Again, you had, uh, the situation in terms of, what I'm hearing of, the situation for you, you had a massive move out. It's terrific in what we've said, but in six quarters, next year's gonna be a big company we have right now.
But spend last weekend.
You got.
I'll, I'll wait to, I'll wait till you finish, I'm gonna, okay. Um, you know, this is my fourth year, and I'm still struggling with municipal accounting and circuit breaker, how we budgeted, yeah, net. So, what I, it would be nice, if we could, if we could see some line items that shows what the, the circuit breaker amount is, or the, the amount sucked in the circuit breaker is.
Yep.
And to know, like, in this case, we budget forty percent of that, but first of all, the line item is net. Net, net forty percent, that comes in at higher than that, and that's what I can start getting lost. It'd be nice to see on the budget, to know what the amount that sucked in the circuit is, and have some carryover from prior year, because the money that we get in now, four sixty-eight, was probably.
Well, it's based on, actually, with the actual money that came in, and that's what would be a real question to be, all the way.
But, but they're basing on what year?
Previous year.
Previous?
FY fourteen.
So, we're getting, so we're getting revenue in FY, in FY twenty-eight?
Fifty-five fifteen.
So, so that's the confusing part.
Let's forward.
So, the whole thing, wow, are we still gonna budget net? Is that a, that's a very good question.
You mentioned us budgeting, we're not getting that money, that circuit breaker money was actually, um, that was from my understanding, correct?
Yeah, it goes back to free cash, but we still have, we still have the vote, the numbers. So, that money comes in, and that goes in free cash for the town, as I understand it, but we've always talked about, does it make sense to have, if the town can spend that right away, maybe in Dover, they keep it for a year or two years, suspend it on this type of lift, because, like I said, we've had a lot of positive experience, some of what we're gonna have a negative experience, so we're gonna get hit with a couple hundred grand, and so, sort of, where is that gonna come from? So, just being able to tie the years together, see how we budget, if that's possible, because it's great when the numbers are positive, but they're not.
And you're absolutely right, you, you, what you both, you're helping make sure when you do it, what your spectrum is much different than what I don't think is doing for, 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 for most of us, again, you have your total cost of special education, you then net out the circuit breakers, and the appropriation budget is basically reflecting the amount net of the circuit breakers. Here, you do it for forty percent, so you have sixty percent reserve current.
Well, I think we're just being conservative.
Yes.
Which makes sense, we understand that, but you never really know what's the cost of the run, because of the, with the net.
The true cost.
The true.
Yeah, oh, that, that's.
Yeah, we can, we can determine that being as good as.
That's true. Because I could, I think instead, I'll make sure I get this right, I could back the circuit breaker out, to get a true, you know, recharge the actual account, which is certainly the true cost of what was left. I have no doubt.
Well, it's, it's not as much known as the true cost, it's, it's just basically being a stupid number, and I did not have the, the first one, dropped my hand and say, you know, well, I haven't thought about it, and it's still okay. So, this number, nine fifty-two, three ninety-eight, well, that's from that, it's split up now, but the number we had for May was tuitioned and non-public schools, nine fifty-two, three ninety-eight, and that's in two, two different parts here. But that, that number is, is net of a forty percent expectation of the first, is that right? Okay. So, let's knock the whole, no, let's knock that. The only question I had was, just one from what we got in May, regular fed transportation, budgeted on, on your sheet was a hundred and seven, eight fifty-seven. From the May report, it's a hundred and seventy-two, eight fifty-seven, there's a difference, I'm assuming there's a difference someplace. I can't find it, I can't find it.
What do you think, Barry?
Well, in your report, you break out the region, which is nice.
Yep.
Okay. And, and our previous report, it didn't break out, did not break out the region. So, for instance, regular tuition in math schools, for the region, is twenty-two, six sixty.
Yep.
And for Pine Hill, it's forty-two thousand, so that's sixty-four, six sixty.
Yep.
That's, that's one line item on our May report, okay? So, on your report, it's got regular fed transportation, one oh seven, eight sixty-seven.
Yep.
And I can't find, I can't find that number, on our May report, it's one seventy-two, eight sixty-seven, so there's a difference.
I'll have to look at the May.
Some, somewhere.
I think I can. Okay. Hey, I have a question. I know that at a recent advisory meeting, a number came up where supposedly, besides from, you know, all the savings you projected here, that there was an additional five hundred ten thousand dollars out there somewhere, that, uh, someone said was money that was going to go back to the town. Now, has that been sorted out?
If it, if it's fine sorted out, I mean. We know, this, my numbers do not exclude that five hundred thousand issued.
Right.
And when we sat with the, my experience with Pine Hill, when we were doing these numbers, and said, are these, are you okay with these numbers that are presented with school, and if it's yes? Then there's this other issue, or an accounting issue, on, in Pine Hill, that has nothing to do with how we will present our numbers, or how the school will accommodate them. coming into that.
So it's the county sheriffs having to issue separately.
It's probably not...
Yes. But it could be, you know, something falls on us, or a windfall, or depending on which way it goes. Can I ask...
Yeah, we're, we're meeting with Irene tomorrow night at our advisory committee meeting, and she, this is one of the questions we're just going to bring up with her, is what clarification of it. From my understanding, I think it's like a, there was an error in the accounting, not on the school committee, not on the school side, but on the accounting side of the county sheriffs, that was a typo of an extra zero, that it was, it was an item that was supposed to be fifty, and then a five hundred, and now there's an additional four fifty that was allocated. I, I don't know the details, and that's why we're meeting with Irene tomorrow night, so we can get a better clarification, because I mean, that's a big number that we need to find out.
Yeah.
Of what, uh, where it is, or how that's going to impact budgets or turnbacks or whatever.
From what I'm understanding, that it is not money sitting in...
Correct.
School budget funds. These are monies that, it's money that's, that's already in the general fund.
In free cash, yeah, I think it is.
And, and that they just have to clarify what the difference is and the path that the outcome likelihood will be, as we understand it, is that the sheriffs, free cash, will go off.
Yes. There's money that wasn't accounted for in free cash last year, that will now be in free cash this year because it was put in at the wrong amount or something like that. That, that's what I, like I said, Irene knows more about it, and we're meeting with her tomorrow night with a clarification on that, but that would be in addition to this six hundred and seventy thousand. If, if there is.
If any shit exists.
If it exists.
Right. Thank you.
I think I have another question. Just for clarification, uh, this, uh, when the conference, uh, for people, uh, as a right, you know, finance, or maybe I should say, probably better term. Most people, if you can put it in your statement, saying that, um, variances, you know, for the legal one, but others was about hundred and fifty-three, and then the special ed out of district was a hundred and forty-six, well, the numbers, that's about three hundred thousand dollars. From what I remember from the end of last year, that number was not so large, as you say, iron numbers or returning...
Iron, both those categories, not this last year, so much harder to answer.
Right, so, uh, and this money's going to be returned back to the town or something?
Yeah.
So one of the things that we discussed, and maybe just as a, a thought, we should simply break up, we're constantly concerned that sometime we might get hit with a special lift number, and trying to get it in town, something in at the town level that Texas gives, we do have that amount in our budget, can't maintain or can't deal with that. This seems like with this kind of four sixty-eight, three hundred, it'd be in time to maybe have a discussion, and it may be early enough in the year, that this could actually be something that you set up and could be created.
A lot of community, a lot of...
And that, and I saw it actually from a town that had a huge and major problem with this, it's a town right up on one twenty-eight, right in their own state, not, uh, ten, twelve miles from where the Pope goes from here, and had some really major issues, and almost brought them to a really bad place. And one of the ways they fixed it was by doing...
I think there is a stabilization fund, I'm not sure whether it's used or something like this, but these two dirt roads, now being used, it's also the dirt fund, which might not be large enough, but from what you're talking about, there is a dirt fund, so things that might come up during the year, you know, your boilerplate, something like that, or... Could we have some sort of special one for the next, directly just to sort of flush out where we are, and something, I mean, the town's definitely in a better position from the free cash now that...
I mean, the, just, just on the regional school side, they have their E and D, which, I don't know if it's something similar to that, where they have like a five percent, um, sometimes we refer to it in the advisory committee as a school fund, but, uh...
But that's, but that's the region, isn't it?
Right, I'm saying, but at the school level, to have that, I mean, we do have, um, five percent free cash in the town, so if we're over budget, you can, kind of, we can transfer money from free cash, from what I understand, and that's not, like the region has it because we have to go to both towns, but on the school, we do have the free cash, a reserve fund townwide that can be used if the police department goes over, or if, you know, or like this year, we were over on smaller removal, that kind of thing, we have that reserve fund on the town level, but...
This money, so I'm confused, or this money is in a, a certain account in a town level, right? And my opinion is it can stay there for some period of time, two years, some months, some months, or...
The circuit breaker money goes into the revolving room, it's on its own.
It can stay there, correct?
You can go out, you can go over for one year, but it is, we use up the money.
Oh, okay, that's where, that's where it's all over.
Rest of the money is supposed to be appropriation, that's simply on the town, you know, ledger, but that's going to fall far, it'll fall right out.
Okay, so it's a year.
So if you want to, you know, lock down town, you either do the circuit breaker fund at some level, which is not to go over, which is a standard, or you create a special revision fund, which is a lot of money, you know.
Okay. We'll, we'll put some, uh, we'll put some information together for the next agenda on next meeting, and we can figure out a further discussion. I think, um, I think it's an excellent point, and, uh, you know, again, depending on past practice and how, uh, how we want to budget for special education, projected special education expenses, there are some different possibilities in terms of, um, having, having a responsibility, case, we experience the opposite of what we experienced with the budget.
The swing load numbers, it's quite hard, and hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, at the drop of, and you can't predict it in advance.
Absolutely.
I just said, we put money to the ground, but you, you do budget, excuse me, seriously, because you're, you're budgeting not necessarily more than we, we, we're seeking your intent, hiding your hedge against the tax rate.
Well, I think that's why we've been moving to that way, maybe there are other ways to do it that would make more sense. It'd be great if maybe we could get some of the information to us a little bit earlier for those that are willing to do some background research to bring us up to speed and make a...
The explanation of the whole circuit breaker process that was being due three years ago, and explain in both towns, how the whole, I think, was that...
That'd be great.
Just one comment on the, just further discussion a little bit on the free cash on the town level. One, um, real mission of our advisory committee last year and again this year is, since we have been in a good position with free cash, is trying to reduce the tax rate in the town, because rather than setting up more and more reserve funds and using the money, it's really more a responsibility of the budget, and we try to get that money back to the taxpayers, because if we're over by that much and have that much surplus, it means that we owe the tax. So we really, that's, that's where we're coming from, so whenever, a lot of departments will see the big free cash number, and all of a sudden want to set up additional funds, but we really want to get that tax rate down, and that's not so much that we...
It's not like you can raise taxes, somebody who's saving a cost of five hundred thousand dollars, you have two families, you have a million dollars worth of funds, you can't go back to them and say, you know that money we gave you back from the lower taxes? So I feel like this, our job's often educate people that this, this special spend cost can fluctuate so drastically, and so it's good to take advantage when it's in our favor, just because it's happened, so it doesn't work in our favor, and so I think that's, it's different from perhaps other things that may not, right?
Right, I mean, it's not like we're going back and giving money that, staying going forward, correct the tax rate to where it should be, rather than having these large surpluses. I know in other years we've had deficits, so we just need to be...
But I'm saying the reason we have a surplus is because of unusual events.
Right.
So don't assume that next year we're going to be that, our budget that we said is going to be that much less than the budget was this year, um, just because it was an unusual event.
And I think we talked about that, Tom, it's right, about like the smart budgeting, I know I've talked about it with Irene too, like looking at trends rather than just saying, okay, we're not going to look at one year and say, oh, we have this huge surplus, we're going to cut all the way back, no, that's not responsible, we need to look at the trend and say, look at the spend over the last five years, to determine whether that's where it's put out, not just because we've budgeted in the past, where the right budget is supposed to be based on trends.
Makes sense.
Just quickly, and then last thing, uh, last year, above the line, I'll call the operational part before we get to the region, three fifty-four number, uh, if we get back, that was seventy-four thousand one year. And then below the line, the three sixteen, this year, and we get back, and we go to six seventy-one, that was two twenty-one, so it's, it was an extraordinary year in terms of very low, low, low of the expected.
So let's move to the conversation next one, which will be very interesting. Did they get a contribution?
Yep.
All right, so let's go back to, I want to, some other...
Yeah. You want to...
First of all, by rights, I don't even know seeing children come up and read books or anything. Real briefly, just came back from the list that we made, discussion about this chain system at the rear of the school, and we're like, it's clear that cemetery commission has full control of that, so I want to know that discussing that access point in that particular chain and system is really to the school community to discuss. I brought out the panel from our public safety committee here, just to share that we are going to be continuing the conversation with cemetery commission and the public safety commission on some kind of, frankly, thought that we could, this all worked out, and it probably doesn't.
I just love to say, none of people have no chance of being in this, I think that, you know, police, fire, BBW should all have access to be able to improve that area up there, but in respect of, I think it should be some sort of thing there, but you have a future, okay? Because that comes in right behind the school, in fact, because we have a chain between the parking lot and that back drive, so if someone came down there, they caught in there, and maybe not go back up, might not be easy to get back up, and they could drive towards the playground or towards the back of the school, and, you know, at night, it'd make a mess, because during the day, it could be rather dangerous for kids there. So I have no problem with anyone having access, but I can just see kids or whatever, middle of the night, driving down there, I think six or seven years ago, there was some stones or something put there to block that off, and they were, because the people were driving down, and they were removed, and I can understand that, wanting to prove it. In my perspective, it seems like a good idea to have somewhat limited access. The, the other road is locked, the big road, the back, that has a chain on it, sort of locking neither end, and if one was going to be open, in my perspective, that's the one we should have open, so you can come right in with a fire truck or whatever.
Look, I, I would respectfully disagree with Frank. I, I, I think we have too many, or don't have enough points for a lot of us in the public safety to respond to true emergencies here. So I was going to suggest to the cemetery commission that we leave that gate open during school hours, so if we had to respond to the, what we did last year, with the allegation that there was something looking to fire on the right of the rear of the school, we can respond to the emergency. I think that's critical, the safety of the students and the staff here. And I have no problem securing the gate at night, as you exhibit, we have a CCTV system, if my personal, can view in real time, so if anybody's coming up at night, Pine Hill to pull up that access road, which I think is ridiculous to suggest, considering the paved entrance off of cemetery lane is always open, that's the easier way to get, get up into the cemetery. We're able to see that in real time, and we can send a police officer up there, and just, that's the reason why we have it, is not just the school security, why we have the students in the building, it's also for my personal, to prevent people from, from doing the TV or coming up and doing the donuts and coming up.
It was an instance, about a week before school opened, I happened to have locked my car here, I happened to have gone to a social event, and when I was dropped back in my car after midnight, within seconds, Officer Stickney was right up that way. So it works well.
Just a, a couple weeks prior to that, there was three individuals that were walking behind the school, we located them, when we initially got up here, we saw them on the camera, that's how they were located initially, upon them seeing me, they fled on foot, I couldn't even find out who they were, and they were advised, they, they ran because they thought they were going to get arrested initially. They were swinging on the swing sets, there was no other, uh, you know, damage done to the school, but they were more nervous than anyone else, but it was good that we saw it on the camera, and we were able to respond, we up there to see that.
What's market circles, why inside the milk from the school center?
I think we're, you know, with kids in the school, I'm, I'm wondering how, how it engages, you know, the children's, from a children's safety perspective, that two years ago, roughly, we, there's a lot of town debate about creating this access road, which goes out the side, which is closed for demo traffic, but now, I've, kind of, surprisingly, there seems to be now an established road going into the back of the school, through the cemetery, so I'm, I'm surprised, as, you know, as a parent of children here at the school, so I'm trying to, I'm struggling with, how do I gauge the importance of public safety, the access into the school, versus now we have, you know, how is, concerns should be that there's now a road coming from the cemetery into the back of the school building, where the children have the playground? If it's great, it's monitored by, you know, closer, if that's, that helps, but now we have a developed, it appears to be a developed road into the back of the school that was previously off, completely off my radar. So, I mean, where's the...
Just to correct the structure.
Sure.
While there wasn't really a problem material sealed, okay, it's a reclaimed product from the asphalt from Maple Street.
Sure.
Um, that, that road car path that's described was made of different things, that's been in existence well before I was born, that, that, that was there.
It's been like a gravel or something.
It was, it was more dirt, but it certainly was travelable, we were able to travel and control, more importantly, through that, that, okay? So that, there's so much misinformation going around, and frankly, I'm wondering a lot about the history of that road, and progress.
And that road is our egress road, should we have to evacuate students from our school site? So the, the police department and our safety committee have been talking about making it passable all four seasons.
Certain cases, you were right.
In the event we have to evacuate children.
And that's, that's, we're saying, right. It is critical to understand that, yes, we did put in this access road that leads up to Maple Street, um, that really isn't so stupid, you evacuate it from school. You know, the problem with any emergent situation is you can't predict where it's going to occur. So if we've got an emergent situation at the corner of the school, by that road, we're certainly not going to evacuate kids in that direction, we're going to go that way.
It could be dumb.
We absolutely need as many options as possible.
So I think it's misunderstanding, this is what you pointed out, so, you know, I hear one thing, and now I'm trying to process and understand specifically what it is, so I have a better perspective now, and I think certainly anyone hearing about this would probably go through the same cycle that I just did, and, you know, have some clear understanding of, well, it's, it's not a paved, one-lane road where it's more, it's always, it's been there, okay, that's, I can realize that, and now it's a step being mud, when it's wet, now it's actually still passable by a, or a, or a door, whatnot.
Right, and from what I understand, speaking of the senior D director, it's also directed an issue with water damaging some of the property career of the school, so materials preventing some of the water to come in and damaging that, so it's, it's kind of helped in that respect.
I'd like to hear that, that's... I'd like to hear that.
One other thing, as far as urgency evacuation, is that when they, recently we're gonna build that road with the sidewalk and everything, one vision was the side going up to cemetery, is you could walk down there, and if necessary, walk to the town garage for a bus evacuation is another possibility, big enough facility. I know it's a longer walk, and it's even from the way.
I'm Arthur Fenn, I'm the chairperson of the town public safety committee. I've never been before yet, so I know some of you who've been hired. I just wanted to mention, this is something that has been a significant public safety issue. We've been talking about it at our meetings, jointly with the cemetery commission and any other interested parties, Dr. Brown's been there, some of our meetings, for quite a while. So I don't know if this seems like it's new, or it seems like it's newly developed. This is actually an issue that's been hashed out, I thought, to be, they come to a resolution this past summer, and everybody was on the same page, cemetery commission, public safety commission, all the stakeholders in town, we'd all agree that it's gonna happen. And then I guess, there's some disagreement thereafter. So this is something that has been an ongoing concern, priority matter for the public safety committee, something that we're trying to drive. But I'm sure they're gonna invite anybody here, Dr. Brown comes regularly, but if there's anybody else that'd like to come to our meetings, we can either put you on the email list, or make sure that you're otherwise involved in the discussions, if you wanna come and be part of that, that's going forward, if your presence is pretty good.
Okay, just quick, Barbara, when you were born, you understood all of the recommendations and all the safety concerns and everything?
Absolutely. And the recommendation of our Sherwin Police Department that we needed a clear egress road, and one that could be followable should our students need to evacuate on foot and implement in the winter time.
I think that context was absolutely me, you know, today. So like, having hashed it out yet again, thank you for educating me so deeply.
And certainly, public safety and specifically Pine Hill safety is, you know, something we all communicate about frequently. In the last two years, it's, it's, we've, in response to information we've gathered, some other communities' situations, we've been more vigilant than ever. I think it'd be great, and the school community will be happy. Importantly, we'll, certainly last year, we, we had multiple sessions about public safety, and we voted in to spend money to enhance the security system and all, to be, for us to have the full picture, rather than just kind of as an ad need to know.
I think what is, you want any agenda you want to, you vote on what you think.
Thank you. We should definitely do that. Maybe after the budget season.
We're fine, no more money?
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
That's great.
Does anybody have any more questions or comments about this?
Thank you very much.
Right, because I. All right. So, yes, so we're in FY seventeen, which is capital planning calendar of the year.
In your package was a, a problem in almost final operating capital budget calendar. There's actually still a bit of, it's still a bit of a working document. And it appears to me that there's still one date to be determined regarding capital, and that will be when Sherman School Committee meets with the Sherman Capital Advisory Committee.
I don't know.
No, no, exactly. So we just need to, we just need to talk about that and plug it in. Maybe it has to be, you know, maybe it's a window that we, we plug in, so we have a good understanding of, of when that meeting may occur.
There's a new, there's a new chairperson of the capital committee, I think, and I'm not even sure who that is at this point. So once I communicate with that person, we'll have more clarification as to when we're gonna.
Sure. So we'll, we'll keep working on that. But we certainly are in a place where we're starting the process and we, we know where we need to be for up to that point. And then there's still one date to be determined for the operating budget presentation, Sherman Advisory to it. So we, we've listed three possible dates. We, we and I review this and we're looking at previous years. Yes, that's down below.
I'll go through that. Like I said, we're meeting tomorrow night. So I can clarify one of those dates before you're done. And then we're meeting, I guess, about a month from now.
Twenty-first.
I mean, if it's not before the hundred, we'll have a credible deadline.
So, so this has been a helpful process for Hans and I to, to go through and hash this out. And so we appreciate the patience. And as, as those two dates get finalized, we'll, we'll force our date to and make sure that everyone's as well aware of what the calendar is.
Can I ask you if we just today cited October twenty-first?
October twenty-first works. I moved our, yeah, I moved our meeting. We were supposed to have one on the fourteenth, but we moved it to the twenty-first.
So, right. So would we also get a fight on the, to the school committee if they want to come in ten? So, it's Sherman Advisory and?
That'd be our advisory meeting, where you kind of rehash to our entire committee the fiscal year fifteen recap, like you just did here. But it gives the chance for our whole committee to ask questions. Or I think it also can have some strategic discussions about FY seventeen as well. So I felt like it could be very helpful for everybody to be there to contend, because it'll give you a chance to hear other comments, other than me, or the normal, um, that would be a human.
And we'd also need the Sherman reps from the region to be there as well. So, and it's not liberatory.
So my understanding is, in the past, there, this meeting has occurred in the past, but typically, it's been administrative representation and perhaps the chair of the team committee was in it as well. So the suggestion is that if all members are more than welcome to attend that meeting, but I think it would still.
Right, right. So perhaps it should be posted in cases and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we'll look at that. I mean, yeah, if, if it's going to be deliberation, then it has to be posted as the Sherman School Committee. If another town committee is invited to attend the meeting for informational purposes, and the school committee is not going to be deliberating, then, then the open meeting on guideline that the county general's office established, establishes, establishes it, doesn't mandate that the school committee has to, you know, even though.
And I think the idea is not for us to deliberate. I think it's to be an exchange back.
One other thing I can do is clarify the time. Like, right now, we have it at seven fifteen. I can do a time for the region and a time for the, for the Sherman School Committee, so you're not necessarily gonna have to sit through both if you don't want to. So I'll figure, probably do yours first, because yours will probably be easier. So, or less questions, probably. But I will, I'll, I'll figure that out, and you know that.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
All right. What about the capital planning updates?
Are you gonna do the half one?
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna review the update.
I actually got an update on FY fifteen, capital projects for this year. Air handling use of the last unit of project, the end of it, the right funding, and library, the air handling, and that gave me, so the last unit of the ramp, the, the, the summer. Stocked roof insulation work, I was put up with it, because we got no bids. So we spoke with every source, and we spoke to the head, we had a number from last week, and there was program from last week. It was very promising, and the members knew our team, and everybody was very, so the test, but it didn't work out. It finished in the press. Outside here, we've had our security, that needs to be good, that was not enough to give. There was some questions about, I've been asking, the drainage project, the last one, was involved curving up front, a lot of the management, they had to, and the window project needed higher in our, in the year, which was, was a capital meeting, just for last week, of the, of the, the.
I can use a speaker box.
Yeah. Just a question on last year is, how much of that noise is coming from that fan, how much is coming from over there?
Yeah, that's the same question.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you unplug it so we can tell? Because I think it's up above, I think we should have them go back and do something.
Well, that's a question. Is that one turned off? Is that why that one is not making any noise? Or if you turn that on, will it go back to making noise again?
You could set the cycle. I'm the idea.
In my, sorry, in my thing, that's the noise. Because, you know, we aren't gonna do this again for another ten, fifteen years. So you're gonna have kids in here, and learning atmosphere, and multiple groups and everything. That, that one is on or off?
It's on.
Okay, so this is on and quiet?
Yep.
This one has a little more.
No.
To one more, I think, but it's being overblown.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You can see the light flicking.
Yeah. My understanding from the meeting last week is that the contractor was coming back. Was it Friday?
January.
Oh, I thought they still had to do some final official.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah, because that's, it's a lot, it's a bunch of money.
It sounds a little bit different than it did months ago, but still has a very hell tale sound.
Well, we couldn't hear this sound because this sound is so loud.
I just know, there's always been air handler noise, so.
Okay, so as far as the coming quest for this year for capital, it's still in the working progress for the April two thousand sixteen meeting. So as Barbara noted, the Pine Hill Student Building Committee met on September tenth. Some individuals will meet with the administration on Thursday to go over the capital needs plan, and the needs here, and try to correlate those two to go forward from there. And then we are going to meet on, on October eighth. Pine Hill Student Building Committee will meet again on October eighth. Hopefully, we'll have some more news to bring to that meeting, and that interim meeting is going to happen. Now, one thing to keep in mind for next year is the window cost. If you look at last year, it's been twenty-eight thousand for engineering, okay? And the project probably will be well over two hundred thousand, could be. So the last time around, we found that when we asked for the total amount, it took two or three years to do it, because we had to do engineering, and then we had to get this back, a lot of bids. So we didn't want to tie up the capital available to the town, so we only asked for the engineering. And then we'll be asking the others. It could be two hundred thousand, you know, plus fifty or minus fifty, you know, it involves the windows here, it involves the windows in the cafeteria. So, firm numbers. And so we're gonna go forward and try, that's one of the things for this year, is to get that engineering done. And perhaps even before they finish the engineering, we'll get some estimates. And I noticed that, talking about October thirteen, well, capital budget submission on October thirteen, that would be a tentative one. And then final approval, November tenth. And even if we have numbers to tend, I think that these are numbers that will be refined all the way up to town meeting, as we get more and more estimate that we have even potential to work and support, and that we'll be able to tell back. So the numbers will be there for an improvement, but they will be refined as we go forward, right up to the meeting. How do we, so the, so the long-range plan is several years old.
Right.
How do we come up with, how do we get these numbers and make them accurate?
For next year, if we're working on the plan from three or four years old, I mean, how do you, because you can't really give the number to you out of bid, and you can't, you have a project, right? Right. And you can't do that until you have money appropriated. So.
Well, in the past, we figured out sort of why we draw the contractors. Now, we give us some estimates. And sometimes we have to go forward, because that's, and some of the things, we have to go back thoroughly, because you talk about the years in the classroom. Well, the plan had like, you know, four thousand this year, four thousand next year, and spread it like ten years. And so we did it once, we got a bid on it, okay? We did it all at once. And some of the, the curbing and so forth, some of that was put together, some of it we had to separate out, what they have in the plan. We, that's what we have to do back, let spreadsheet pick those things up. Okay?
Well, we've been, we've been conservative in a lot of things, and tried to be really conservative, and that can work against us. You know, when we present two hundred grand and it comes out to be fifty.
Yeah.
Hard to do this.
Right. So some of those, if you don't actually have bids in hand, you have to go with, you have to go with, you know, a hundred percent, a hundred percent figure, whatever, right?
That's definitely one of the things we hit on, that would be really helpful, for me, for helping with my research. But also, just so that we, in the public knowledge, going back to that document, kind of giving a presentation of what did it say were the projects that we could have done up until this date, as well as what projects have you leave the head on, to kind of give us a sense, and not like a recap of where we stand as we go into this capital budget number, and that's something we had to vote on. So A, we would understand it better, and we can explain it better in the twelve letters. General public will see it as well.
That's something, right, and I've talked about, going through that, to check the things out. One problem is, is that nobody made this plan, but not to turn over the money to the government, or whether it's classifieds or capital projects. So they talk about replacing door hardware and thresholds, and they'll have, you know, two thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there. And those things, probably, we are doing some of those things under regular maintenance. And so if it doesn't show up, you're not definitely in a threat. But those are the things you have to serve. If it's a plan, you get together on Thursday, and we'll do that in detail, and find out if things aren't in the plan, keep it in the plan, it's created, essentially created, created.
And what would you, and now, and your future is hopefully to work with your year of capital, is that what you plan?
I think about three years in. So if your advisory, capital would like to have a three to five-year projection. So we have to get a, first of all, we have to worry about seventeen, to get a front seventeen. And then as we get closer, we have to project out three to five years. And remember, the, the roof is in the sixth year, and that'll probably be a million dollars. Okay, the roof. So that's something that capital would keep on the radar, if they're trying to space things out. And we might have to look at the roof, depending on the way they went to the bend. You might want to do it a year early, or two years earlier, or a year later, depending on the condition of the roof. So even though you have this document, you still have to use common sense going forward.
Also, is that something you could set money aside for a big capital project? Is there a way to pre-loan your account? So, for instance, we have a windfall this year. We know that roof is gonna cost a million dollars.
It's like without a target to go, sure, you look at more of the hard, the city, the bonds, and they, they.
Yeah.
And one thing the town can do is, if the free cash is building up, you could give back the taxes, or you could hold it. And then, you know, maybe you'll have enough to buy a, the truck, or you'll have enough to do a twenty thousand dollar winter project and not borrow. And that's the next phase. So there's one way to look at that free cash, rather than just getting it out. And of course, I think Dover keeps there. And then they have a fire truck ready, two thousand, they just fight.
Yeah. We did that last year. We bought a number of capital items because of our large recap effort. There were, we funded a lot much than we have in the past. So I think, and we have talked about it in some of our meetings, that it's critical right now, as we're having another year with, with, with cash, to look at the capital items. So since we have it now, maybe it's the time to do some of these things, but also, you know, don't just do them to do them, but if we have them on the radar screen, it could, it's.
I've got a few questions. If, so from that standpoint, if you're gonna, if you're gonna borrow, you've got two hundred thousand capital items every year consistently. At some point-
At some point, it doesn't make any sense to borrow money because you're just paying it, right? Does it make sense to, to work, you know, some number, some small number, fifty grand into the operating budget every year as opposed to... As opposed to, I mean, so you need projector or you need something, we're going to be replacing things. Why not just have a part of the, of the operating budget?
Pardon? Yeah, so would you, you had some, some number of your own?
So we did increase our extraordinary maintenance last year, maybe it needs to be put down again.
But it's, but that's like, sort of, broken furniture, things that are just completely unusable. It just seems like if we came up with a number and did a line capital item or something like that, so.
Is that, what's the technology plan, is that kind of a, is that something where you're projecting this year, how much are you going to be spending on a grid?
Yes.
And is that part of the operating budget?
The technology supplement plan that drives the operating budget in that area.
The director of technology has a replacement cycle and that determines what their, how their, the technology can supplement. We have already spent our, our, on our operating, right, and Dover uses their capital.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My question on that, let's say that we have a large IT project that, that, would we maintain that as a capital budget?
Right, well, one, one thing here is the whole lock system, the bell system, we were talking about.
Right, we're talking.
Right, and that could be a couple hundred dollars itself.
Well, we didn't want to touch the bells, we want to touch the telephone.
Yeah.
Call me that.
Great.
We could be calling, we're so good at IT, talking with, with Anthony, who's the IT director, this morning. I think we could, we could work this on for interest, at any service, that's good, that's good. Well, it almost has to be a capital item, but suffice. If that, that person could ask, I don't know how you handle it, I came to you and said, look, I have a forty-five thousand dollar IT, which is a combination of, you know, upgrading all the services and then, plus, and the phone, every year. I would assume, I would assume that was a capital budget. We, we hope that they're willing to say that it's a, yeah, or...
Does that make sense?
Yes, that, right. And so if that's the type of thing Anthony has the handle on, he should bring it to us well before our, our, our...
And that's why I always said, I didn't even think to invite him to our capital planning meeting. I think we've been discussing this, and it's something that we need, like, maybe, like, IT, like, yeah. If I, if I will, and we'll never set the next meeting, I can, I can, I can.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, all right. Let's go to the, just a really quick, since we're running a really long superintendent search update. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that when the process of creating the selection committee, there's been outreach to parents and members of the community at large who have an interest in search, and the nomination forms is available on the Pine Hill School Committee page. And also, there are plenty of members of the community to share their views about participating in the online survey, which is also on the website. And also, the same to the members of the school committee, if people are interested in serving on earth and one member of the community or interested in serving, please help me, let me know. And the members of the SSDs, of this, of this search, are going to need to discuss how to create a school committee, school committee members on the team that makes sure we all have different sets, different sets, offers to the base. So grateful that we have the next people, so. And, oh, consent agenda.
And, so, tomorrow, isn't there a meeting?
With parents, yes.
Yeah, that's all, so, should we, we have to spread the word, besides all the online opportunities, but physically, if I have to remember the time and location, and what do you think?
It's in the afternoon. It's one, three, three, three.
Okay. So I don't know if the CFA picked up on anything in the last, blast or not.
I don't think they put it in the last, I didn't see it in the last blast.
Something went out, all the parents, from the...
I know, from the, from the Pine Hill side, we've gotten some stuff through, you know, yeah, just... It's, it's all happening quickly, so we want to make sure that the parents know, that the community members at large know that there's some, some ways to be involved.
So for that meeting tomorrow, again, it's a focus group for parents, community members, one o'clock to two thirty at the Sherborne Center, next tomorrow, September sixteen.
And then there'll be a second one, and I can remember some.
September twenty-nine.
Thank you.
From seven to eight thirty, at the Dover Sherman Middle School forum.
Scott, I'd like to point out, and I think that there's been some blast going on on that, but I think there's a specific blast that has that subject line that, that, that parents do not...
It was.
Carol did something out today.
It was in the subject line, it was in the subject line, and I believe a specific blast went out with the, no, she's not today. She would not send one out earlier this week, specific or, and last week, then she had to update the times.
There was a superintendent search community input schedule with a subject line, what email I came on today. So I think, still, maybe not quite as, you know, it's, it's still, I think, maybe difficult to tell that action needed right away, you know, the subject line, but still, maybe one more. It'd aid people and...
At some point, though, people have to actually read their emails.
Besides personally inviting people.
It's not our responsibility to cause it to actually, that's right, yeah. Everyone call, make a phone call.
That's right.
Whether, they won't answer the phones, so.
It's a personal thing.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
I proposed in the, in the...
Do we have season confirmation, or is it okay, it's just going to, when you have it?
No, it's okay, but it's a good opportunity to...
To thank.
To thank the, 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 the department, the department.
I'm excited to put before you a request to accept a donation from the outgoing fifth grade class that left us in June, the class of twenty-two. They raised five hundred and twenty dollars that they donated or would like to donate to the library specifically for a poetry cafe in honor of the recently retired Mr. Mend Adams. And the parents, reps, and Mrs. Wine worked together to think of some great resources that they would set up in a designated area.
Bongo?
Bongos, perhaps lava lamps, and lots of inspiring poetry.
Thank you. Did anybody come and start minutes?
I think we set the, the consent agenda at second.
On favor?
Bye.
So in number ten, it's just communications that are in the packet that, did anybody have any questions from any of the...
My only point is, next, would the office report get the amount that changes the schedule?
So items for our next meeting, which is October thirteenth, I know I have now class size, our report card system, update on the playground, it's being built about. We talked today about the circuit frequency overload or stabilization fund.
So the system, that's important, wouldn't that be a report? That was not the intent, so we could certainly provide a report of, 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 separately, or as part of, maybe it's going to look like...
By two, that's the technology thing, something, it means maybe it wasn't one pack, that's, that you know, it's like, it's...
Second.
On favor? Right. Thank you very much, everybody.